Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 19, 2025 Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Dr. Andrea Baller.
Present.
Deborah Bloom.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Tom Warner, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. First up on the agenda, we have Mrs. Karati recognizing several music students for their achievements.
Hi, I'm Melissa Karati. I teach at the junior high and I also serve as the Department Chair for the Music Department. Tonight, we want to recognize the students who started their musical journey in Exeter's program and have flourished in the competitive world of music. It starts at the county level where the students prepare an audition piece and then they have to go stand in a very long line and walk into a room in front of two teachers at a different school district. And they're heard on this piece and then ranked among the other 18 school districts. And this year, we had, I have to read this part, 16 county chorus students, five county band students, and 19 county orchestra students representing Exeter Senior High at the senior high counties. Then, about a week later, they went up to Parkland and they had to re-audition again for the district level. This time, they stand in a line with seven counties worth of students, so that's quite a lot. And the audition process adds the element of sight-reading skills, so that gets also very scary. So that, we had six district chorus students, three district band students, and eight district students, uh, district orchestra students represent Exeter. Once, they finally make it into the district realm, then they re-audition at each festival after three days for the opportunity to move on to the regional level, which combines 15 counties in Pennsylvania. If they're seated at the regional level, they re-audition again, once they make it to that festival, for the state level. The performances at any of these levels are amazing. This time, I actually saw all of them. Not every year do I get to go to all of them, but this year, I saw all of them and they are amazing. The conductors that they're working with are collegiate level or professional and they are composers a lot of the times. I know that the state choral composer was Rallo Dilworth and the seventh grade choir sang a piece by Rallo Dilworth. So these are high-quality professionals that they're coming in contact with. The friendships they are making will be lifelong. They also get medals and pins. A lot of them are wearing them. You'll see very soon. A lot of them, we call them the generals, are wearing them proudly and we would like to recognize these students tonight. So Riley Mazur, you guys can stand on up here. Get your recognition. Riley Mazur is a senior who was selected to play trumpet for PMEA Region Band. Riley started playing trumpet in fourth grade at Lorraine and is now our drum major, plays in jazz band and in concert band. She will be attending Quetzal University to major in psychology and is also going to be a member of their marching band. Yeah, you guys can line up. Amy Ipsen is a senior who was selected to play violin for PMEA Region Orchestra. Amy started playing the violin in third grade at Awatton Creek and has been playing in Exeter's orchestras ever since. She will be attending Franklin and Marshall this fall to major in psychology and minor in music. Harrison Brumba. Come on up next to her. Come on. Harrison Brumba is a junior who was selected to play cello for PMEA Region Orchestra. Harry started playing cello in third grade at Awatton Creek and is playing for Exeter and Reading Symphony Youth Orchestra. Here gets a little personal. Adam Karati is a sophomore who was selected to sing bass II at PMEA Region Chorus and at PMEA All-State Chorus. Adam is only one of three students in Berks County to go to State Chorus. Adam is a member of the Exeter Eagle Ares Concert Choir Band and Jazz Band. He also participates in community theater, theater, and Exeter's musicals. Again, dear to my heart. Gillian Karati is a sophomore who was selected to sing alto I at PMEA Region Chorus and play French horn at PMEA Region Orchestra and Region Band. She was also selected to play French horn at the PMEA All-State Orchestra. Gillian began playing French horn in fourth grade at Jacksonwald and now participates in Exeter's choirs and bands, as well as RSYO and Berks Symphonyetta. Grace Campling is a sophomore who was selected to play double bass at the PMEA Region Orchestra and PMEA All-State Orchestra, where she placed first on double bass in the entire state. Grace began playing the bass in third grade at Awatton Creek and now participates in Exeter's choirs and orchestras, as well as the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra and Berks Symphonyetta. Esteban. I love Esteban. Esteban Ruiz Velasquez is a senior who was selected to play violin at the PMEA Region Orchestra and selected to play bass at the PMEA All-State Jazz Band. You only take one bass player for jazz band. It's not an instrument you share positions on. This was Esteban's second trip to All-State. Last year, he was selected on violin in the All-State Orchestra. Esteban started playing violin in third grade at Awatton Creek and added the bass in ninth grade. If you haven't had the opportunity to hear and see Esteban play, you are truly missing out. Esteban plays regularly with the Esteban Ruiz Trio, So What, Dave Flying Mountain Folk Band, and with several Berks Jazz Jams. He is already a professional musician by any standard and will be attending the New School in New York City for music performance. We are incredibly proud of our music program and recently learned that we are again named by NAMM as Best Communities for Music Education. We want to congratulate all of our music students and especially those that are standing in front of you tonight, and thank Exeter for their continued support of the music program. It truly makes a difference in all of our lives. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Karati.
Mr. Mel, I can also say, I want to congratulate your students that showed up for the Reading Choral Society concert the other day. Exeter showed up big time with a bunch of scholarships, especially Mrs. Karati's kids. I was very proud they were there.
Yeah, Adam, Gillian received the scholarship because she attended the region level of chorus. Adam received a scholarship for both the regional level and the state level. And Allison Applegate received a huge scholarship as she is also planning on attending Lebanon Valley College and going into music education, and her strength is in vocals. She was also district chorus level.
Great.
Mr. Mel.
Yes, sir.
In addition, I just always also wanted to congratulate, I saw that the senior high school marching band was invited to participate in the parade and performance on the steps of the state Capitol and support of public school funding of the arts. And I know that Gillian Karati also gave a two-and-a-half-minute speech while she was there. Not an easy thing for any student to do, nevertheless, in front of the Capitol Building, so congratulations.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mrs. Karati. Do we offer a program in composition? And have any of our students, with or without a program, composed pieces?
We have a music tech program at the junior high and at the senior high. Mr. Albright teaches compositional skills within that program. Well, compositional skills are part of the state standards for K through 12 music education, but in that music technology program, he goes into more depth with it because it gives a platform where you can input notes and then the computer will play back what you wrote in sounding like any of the instruments you want. So you don't have to gather all your friends and create a band on the spot. The computer does that part, but it's still all your own notes. And last year, we had Andrew Schwank. He is currently an 11th grader, but he was recognized by the state as having one of the best compositions. He won a composition contest for that. And this year, he was, he submitted, but I think it was, tell me out, it was runner-up. Yeah, runner-up. So, he plans on majoring in music composition, but he has another year to go at Exeter. He actually did do an arrangement for the alma mater, which is pretty cool for marching band. Maybe we'll hear that sometime.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are going to have a solar presentation by Train Technologies.
Just want to add, we've been working on this since last November, December, which the board authorized us to go after a state grant. The results will become official tomorrow or released to the public, but we got early notification. We did get a grant. So, I figured it's perfect timing because we would have been talking about if we get the grant. Now we got the grant. So, I'll let Andrew take over from here.
Thank you very much. That was a very impressive thing to follow. Congratulations, everybody. So, I've met most of you and thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm Andrew Odell with Train. We also have Sheldon Martin here with us tonight, one of our subcontractors, very knowledgeable in solar installations. And just want to give a brief summary of kind of where we're at, and if we could go to the next. As Brian mentioned, congratulations. The announcement was slated for this week, but they sent it out a week early. The school district has been awarded a $344,000 Solar for Schools grant. It's a state grant that was competitively bid, went through a process several months ago. And Brian and team and with our involvement, put in a lot of work on this, so congratulations. This is one of the key steps in making this an attractive financial project for the district. You can read a little snapshot of the letter right here we put up on the screen.
I think we also attached it to the agenda.
Okay, next, please. As we've discussed in prior meetings, our proposed solution is not completely in stone because the sizing still has some steps to finalize it with the utility and some other steps. But this is, we've gone through quite a bit of due diligence with the district. You entered into a development agreement several months ago, and this is just kind of a rough snapshot of where we're talking about the system. Not exactly precise location, but this is pretty much what we're talking about. It is a couple, over a couple thousand panels. It's a sizable system, but it is not as massive, I'll say, as the initial system we talked about. And again, the sizing is still up for development, but this is where we feel is the sweet spot for sizing for the district. And this is at Awatton. The system would cover the load for Awatton and then also another school yet to be determined. So, in the way we size it is so that we minimize the infrastructure impact on the grid with the utility. And it does meet the complete load of Awatton Creek Elementary and then would add additional load. You can capture the load from another school within two miles as part of their virtual net metering program, if you remember that term we talked about before. So it is about, roughly about a megawatt, 1.3 megawatt DC system. And very excited to hopefully engage in this project with you. Next slide, please. This is a financial snapshot, just a reminder of some of the numbers we had talked about before. With the size of the system, in the three-point million range, you can see the PV cost. You have a grant application you've been awarded. You have the SREC program is well in place. Last time we spoke, we showed that to you with and without those SREC credits. Those are a negotiable credit that has been in place for a number of years. We expect them to be in place for a number more years. In fact, the word is, that we're hearing, is that they will increase in the future. So we're using a conservative number for now for those SREC credits. And then the final incentive, the 1.5 million, over 1.5 million, is the direct pay tax credit, which is part of the Inflation Reduction Act, would go directly to the school district as a direct pay credit based on the project. And that is based on the renewable energy aspect of the project. It's also, you get money for using prevailing wage and for using domestic content. And so those are all three things that we've gone after with this project. And you can see the impact of the project in a little pie chart, and we can show that some more in the future slides, but it shows you your current split. Yes?
Andrew, I do have one question. So at the, with the ITC, obviously, we're aware at the federal level, there's a lot of cuts happening. And one of those is focused on energy and I, from, you know, bits and pieces that I've read, is that renewable energy is kind of targeted in terms of, with this administration, in terms of getting rid of, you know, funding for those sources and kind of getting back to, you know, drilling and oil and that sort of thing. Have you heard anything about any of this going away with that ITC money?
Yeah, yes, we keep a close eye on that, and that's a very relevant question. There are a number of grants and things like that that have been in jeopardy over the last year.
Yeah.
This direct pay tax credit is very much in place, in play for the rest of this year and we think through the next year. So we think it's safe for now. We think anything could be up in the air in the future, but for now, we're moving forward. We're, it's solid. Yep.
Yeah, they actually incorporate in the tax code, if you're a homeowner, you can get a credit. School districts don't file tax returns, but they, in the tax code, they allowed it that we actually get a cash payment instead of a tax credit. So that's the portion that's still in there. The extra money for, you know, building, things like that is very much in jeopardy. In fact, they're not even taking applications to decide what they're doing with that. It's still possible, but I'm not, we're not counting on it. And we're using a 30% tax credit. You can actually get a 40% tax credit, but there's some hoops you have to go through, like everything has to be American-made and stuff like that. So we're still, we're using the conservative end.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Feig, what's the yearly estimated energy cost that we have currently for the buildings that this would be, this would be providing solar to?
Currently, it's close to 250,000.
250,000, so it would take-
That we would save off our electric bill, currently. We know there's another increase coming out with MedEd in June, which I'm told is going to be around 12%, but I'm not sure if that's 12% overall, if it's 12%, you know.
We have-
Commercial or residential. It's a lot of times when they do that, they tackle on the institutions for commercial, a higher rate and less for residential. So it might go up more than 12%, but we're figuring about 12% increase in June of this year.
And would we buy this system outright on year one?
We would be, yeah, we would own it outright in year one. The Financing Authority actually set up a 0% interest loan that you can borrow the money at 0% and then pay it back once the grant money is given back to you or the other monies. Because every grant you get, you have to put the money upfront, build it, and upon completion, they give it back to you. So, but the Pennsylvania House, some type of authority that Pennsylvania set up to fund these at 0% interest.
Last question. So if I understand this correctly, then on year six is when, well, year five is when we would actually start to see savings?
It's almost year six. If you use the X-Rex, if you don't use the X-Rex, it's year seven or eight. And I think you have to commit to those. Is it, am I correct, Andrew, by May 31st of next year?
Yes, the rebate is part of it. The rebate program is with the utility and that expires May 31st, 2026. You would have to have the permission to operate in place by then.
All right.
So there is a time element to it. We would say, and you can see the next slide, if you could, please, gets into some of this. These are some of the numbers, the current bill overall, at the bottom right, 908,000. And then the next, you can see, that was the current bill, 908,000. And then the next slide would be the future bill with the solar, 674. So you see about the 250,000 that Brian mentioned, 254. And then the next slide, please. This is a financial, these next two slides show a 30-year pro forma, just on the financials of it. So you can see that we have the upfront cost and then you have the annual savings with a 3% escalation each year, along with the Solar for Schools grant, the SREC program, and the direct pay credit. And so then you can see, pretty quickly, you get into a positive cash flow. And then significantly, at the bottom of it, the next slide, over 30 years, you're looking at over $9 million in positive cash flow. So, we call that, you know, return investment very, very high because of the huge numbers we're talking about. And this does not actually have the rebate included, but the rebate is, currently is locked in at 10 cents. Again, that would be a deadline of May 31st, 2026.
Right. That's 10 cents a kilowatt hour. The other thing, oh, now I lost my train of thought. Oh, yeah, right now, we're probably, and that's on top of the savings we already have at Awatton, which is probably close to, what is it, close to 100,000?
Yes.
We do, everyone says, you know, this is new for us. No, we've had solar panels on Awatton since it was built in, I think, 2012. And they're putting out on three different legs, 44,000 kilowatt hours an hour. So, and that's three different legs that they're putting it out. And I think the last time we talked, there was worry about maintenance, you know, having to clean those panels. Well, no one's been on that roof since the building was built and they're still putting out the same amount of wattage. And I think when we talked about this a year or two ago, they said it was degradation. We haven't seen any yet and we're over, close to half of life. So. And the other thing, we sized this at 1.1 to 1.3 is, when talking to MedEd, if we go over that, they would require a lot of money for infrastructure because they felt that over 1.3, their system wouldn't be able to help, that where we're at, handle the load coming to them. Underneath that, it was no problem, no real new infrastructure had to be added to MedEd since. Am I correct on that, Andrew?
Yes, we're anticipating minimal infrastructure. We feel like this is the sweet spot as far as infrastructure goes. That's right.
I mean, down the road, if you want to look at other schools, it might be, you know, you have to look at what they can take in that area.
Yes.
I have a question. A few slides ago, we, I think it was 1.1 million was the final cost? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, 1.3? Yeah.
How are we planning to pay for that part of it? I love all the grants we're going to get, the tech credits, but how, what's our plan for paying?
It would be off the savings of the annual savings. We'd easily pay for that.
So we, we're not putting out any money?
Yeah. Once it's up, once it's done, we'd actually be using part of the savings to pay, you know, like a six-year loan or at 0%. We're still not sure if the state Financing Authority is going to take it out past that, but it's very possible that we'd be paying it over, you know, maybe a six-year period.
Okay, so you're saying that some kind of loan would be taken out in order to fund it?
Correct.
And, but it would be eventually paid off by the annual savings?
The annual, the annual amount would be paid by the annual savings.
Annual, okay.
And only a portion of the annual savings.
Okay.
So in other words, where there's nothing coming out of our pocket?
Probably minimal. I mean, I would think there's probably something, but it's not that full amount.
Yeah, it's only for the first 18 months, because we have to pay for, to build it and then we get reimbursed.
And the loan would be for the 3, 3.3 million?
That's what I'm told for, told of.
But then when we get the rebates and ITC money back and everything else, that would pay that down?
That's part of the collateral for the loan.
Yep.
But John, but Mr. Fiddler, there wouldn't be, we wouldn't see savings to the budget, though, until year six. So we wouldn't have, it wouldn't cost us any, you know, we're paying ourselves back, so we wouldn't see general budget savings until year six.
I'm just asking, on behalf-
Yeah, just wanted to make sure you-
On behalf of our friends and neighbors, we don't have to write a check to get this thing off the ground.
Correct. But you're looking at over a 30-year period, savings close to $9 million. You know, and over a 30-year period, you know, we saved, you know, 100,000 euros already with them, just on that one roof. And they were old, old panels. I think they're 175 panels, the new, 175 watts. The new ones are what, close to 600 an hour, 570?
Okay, I'm still under therapy for PTSD from the last fiasco we went through.
We're not talking, Elise or someone else owning it, we're actually owning it.
Got it.
Yeah, and I did one, like I said before, you know, we cut that field, we're still going to cut the field probably two or three times a year because you don't want the trees and stuff growing into it. But it's not a playfield, it's not a sledding field. It's, you know, right now, it's all briars and, actually, when we walked through it, I think it was all the old filth or the ground we took out of the, when they built the school there, put it over in that area.
Just a nice green field that William Wordsworth would have written about if he were-
You're not going to grow anything on unless you're bringing topsoil.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We have one more slide, if you don't mind. This is a key milestones, the next step slide, and this is a snapshot of the timetable moving forward and what's required. The first two items in bold, that interconnection process and the permitting process, they happen simultaneously. Those are six months process to go through, up to six months with the utility, with MedEd. There is some costs, small amount of cost investment for that. Of course, that would be rolled into a project if we had a project approved. Hopefully, hoping to have some momentum with that approval process. Otherwise, we would have to invest in that upfront. And then we also have the construction timeline, about three months. There's a lot of factors with weather. But overall, we're talking seven to 12 months from now till execution, final permission to operate. And that's what the utility's looking for, to issue the rebate. They want to see that final permission to operate to give a rebate check. But there is quite a bit of work ahead, asking, hopefully, to get some momentum and approval soon. I know that you have minimal meetings coming up in the future, but I think Brian could speak to that. But this is the timetable that we're looking at.
And when we talked before, you know, the application and going through, you know, there's several milestones. This is the next milestone where we'd have to spend $7,500. Zoning, we've already talked to them. It doesn't look like it's going to be an issue, but between now and whenever, there could always be changes. I want to make sure, you know, we get it in writing that, you know, we have zoning approval for it. You know, and as you know, I don't like to waste time, so I wanted to maybe do a straw poll, should we still move forward?
Before we do that, can I just ask another question?
Sure.
So, to Mr. Fiddler's point, I also have PTSD from last time. And I remember that when we got, when we got close, which really wasn't that close, is when they started nickel and diming us. I mean-
Right.
If we do go to vote on this, are we going to see the total cost? I mean, for every single thing, landscaping, beautification, whatever all these words may be. And then the other question, I'll just ask it now, is are there maintenance contracts associated with this? What is the cost of the maintenance contracts?
Well, first, yes, we will see it because once we get all the architecture and there's zoning permits and whatever, we're going to have to put it out for bid, get the final cost. Right now, it seems like the costs haven't changed that much. The big question is if we can get all-American and get the 40% instead of the 30%. We're using the 30% now. Maintenance, we can hire someone to cut the weeds two or three times a year, or we can do it. We do that ourselves. Like I said before, the panels, they suggest wiping them off once a year, but our panel's been on the roof of Awatton and no one's gone up- and no one's gone up there and wiped them off and they still work perfectly fine. There's probably should go out and visually inspect them at least once a year to make sure there aren't any cracks or, you know, some type of major storm, but the newer panels are supposed to take up to what, three-quarter inch hail, something like that.
So when I say maintenance contract, I mean like, we have a service that provides us HVAC maintenance and repair.
Right.
Is there some kind of a service that we have to be on contract with that services these X amount of time per year? Or that looks over the system or?
You don't have to be because they're pretty well maintenance-free, but if you feel safe, I know there's companies out there that'll offer.
Oh, I don't know, I'm asking you, I have no idea.
Well, all I'm saying is, no one's been on the roof since we built Awatton and those units are still working.
And there's no third-party company that?
There, oh, there's third-party companies, they'll sell you any type of maintenance.
I understand that, but we do not currently hire a third-party company to service our existing system?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we did have to have a company come out and replace the inverters, I thought, or something like that, wasn't there?
It wasn't the inverters, it was just a switch and that was our electrician.
Okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
We were looking for a company because we thought it was the inverters, but it wasn't the inverters. It was a switch that shuts off between day and night, you know, shuts the system down and it went and shut, turned back on the next day.
I got you, okay.
I have one final question, if I may, I guess for Andrew or Brian. One of the highly technical terms I learned in my nuclear power days was "gotcha." Where are the gotchas here and what are we doing to, A, identify them and B, plan ahead for if we do get got, get got?
Well, if I could just jump in for a second and also an answer to the prior question is, as you go through the interconnection agreement, that's really where you get anything fleshed out that might be a gotcha. And the utility may have their own input. Now, they've already been involved in this process, so it's not new to them. But that's their, then getting in the weeds in the process and us looking at, in the weeds on infrastructure and everything else. We've made some assumptions on infrastructure, we made some assumptions on the best sizing. I would say after the interconnection agreement, that'll get tweaked. Drilling, the amount of drilling that might be required, we see what from our assessment, it's minimal drilling. But if we run across some additional drilling, that'll come up through that process. But those major things would be fleshed out in the early part of that interconnection process. And we're asking to continue the process because you sort of have to continue the process to get into the final nuts and bolts. And we don't think it's a huge commitment to keep going, but we do think there's a sense of urgency because of all these incentives and all the timing of this.
Thank you. So it sounds like we can do a straw poll, see if we have enough board support to move forward. I do also want to just recognize there are some people standing out in the hallway. If you folks want to, you're more than welcome to come in, there are plenty of seats up front here. So feel free to come in and sit down. If you prefer to stand, you're more than welcome to stay standing. Okay. Mr. Feig.
Alright.
Can you clarify what it is exactly?
To move the next application and get, come up with an agreement with MedEd, that costs $7,500.
So, so yes to move forward, no to stop?
And if you remember from last time, I said whenever we have to spend more money, I'll bring it back to the board. So, Dr. Andrea Battler?
Yes, move forward.
Deborah Bloom?
Yes, move forward.
John Fiddler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Jason Mill?
Yes.
Timothy Morgan?
Yes.
Travis Odom?
Yes.
Julia Schaefer?
Yes.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Wow, all nine, yes.
Did you say wow?
I just, I'm sorry. I am sometimes facetious.
Alright, well, next, next time we'll make it a little tougher then.
And just, can I, can I, just so I can clarify something? Because I know Mr. Feig mentioned that we've done nothing with the rooftop at Awatton. We are going to maintain this brand-new one that we have, so if we, right?
Yeah, we're going to clean it, we're going to check it.
I just wanted that out in the public.
But I'm saying, what I'm saying, there was a lot of places, they'll try to sell you a service contract. In fact, the last time we had a presentation on the lease type, they were saying, oh, 60, 60, 70,000 a year. They'll come out and service, wipe your, your units down every year and look for, you know, faulty connections or something. And I, I'm, like I'm saying, I'm not really sure if that's needed because it'll be fenced in. No one's been on our roof and we've never had a problem since then, so it's like, I'm not sure if it's, if it's just a service they sell that's not really needed, you know?
Yeah, and, I mean, I joke with Mr. Feig, but I do know, and I think a couple of the board members mentioned the PTSD with the last time we looked at this, and it was, it was six meetings of relentless solar presentations. And eventually it all came to a halt by a 5.4 volt. So it was very contentious and I do think this is, this process has gone a lot better. I think the patience of the board to kind of sit this out and just see what was out there. We were able to get a solar grant now because the Solar for Schools program came about afterwards. So I do think it has paid off to kind of wait a little bit and, and see what's coming. And also having a different-sized system probably helps a little bit too, but, but yeah, no, I appreciate everything Train has done and presented to this point.
Thanks for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay, moving forward, we are not going to amend tonight's agenda. And next we have superintendent's report with Dr. Haller.
So I'd just like to take a moment to welcome everybody in the audience who came. We have teachers from all across the district, but a good number of them from Awatton Creek. May is a very busy time in our school district. We have a lot of sports going on, but we also have a lot of things happening in our schools with awards assemblies and playdays, field days, our music programs. And it's a very exciting time for our students. I've had an opportunity to visit our arches, visit, go to a number of our concerts. The quality of everything has just been truly outstanding, a credit to our teachers, a credit to our students. And for those who are moving on from Exeter, I wish you well, I wish you luck. It's been a privilege to have you here in our district and I know that you will continue to do great things. And then for those who are returning to us in the, in the summer, early fall, I know that we can expect great things from you as well. And we do have one more concert this week, it's at Awatton Creek, two more.
Yeah, and then the senior high orchestra is that evening.
Well, then I blew that because I was like, I thought I just had one more to go to. But I will go to both. I have on the 21st, which is near and dear my heart, the one at Awatton Creek, because my daughter Maggie will be in fourth grade and this will be the absolute last Haller in Awatton Creek. So, but thank you to all of you and thank you for all the great things that you do for Exeter.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haller. Next, we're going to move on to public comment for agenda items. We do have a number of people signed up here, so we, we're going to move forward. And following Board Policy Number 903 regarding public participation in board meetings, I'd like to emphasize that each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a four-minute duration. We ask that the audience be respectful to each speaker and maintain appropriate decorum. We're going to move on to the first commenter, which is Kelly Klein Carr. If you could please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kelly Klein Carr. My address is 620 Walnut Road in Birdsboro, Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak about the music program and quite frankly, I don't know that I really can say anything that will complement what you've already seen here tonight, but I'll give it a try. A study printed in the American Psychological Association shows, and I quote, "Students who participated in music, who had higher achievement in music and who were highly engaged in music had higher exam scores across all subjects. On average, the children who learned to play a musical instrument for many years and were playing in high school band and orchestra were the equivalent of about one academic year ahead of their peers with regard to their English, mathematics, and science skills as measured by the, by their exam grades. Additionally, musical training cycle physically develops the left side of the brain, which aids students in learning languages. Musicians must read their music, learning quarter, half, and whole notes, which are in fact fractions. They develop eye, hand, and mind coordination, they develop keen listening skills, they develop team skills for playing together, and they learn discipline when committing to practice. Not every child who makes their way through the Exeter School District will be involved in sports or other extracurricular activities. Music for them may be their road to learning to work together and building self-esteem as they feel part of something bigger than themselves. Third and fourth grade strings had 146 kids in 2022, 2023, which rose to 167 in 2023, 24, and increased again to a current enrollment of 180 students. Fourth grade band went from 22 students to 68 students to 86 students in that same timeframe. There are currently 162 members of band at Reifton and 110 orchestra members. I'm quite confident that when the music program was developing, Exeter followed the studies and best practices for when to start students learning string instruments and band instruments. You've seen here tonight the success of EMA. Each of the string students started in third grade and each band student started in fourth. Your programs are growing and county-wide, hands down, Exeter is the best. EMA traveled to the Virginia Arts Festival and was highly recognized. They traveled and performed in Disney. These are amazing opportunities that have framed these students into amazing young adults that we all can be proud of. Now to a more practical side, how many of you have experienced string jam? Great. When you enter the gym, directly in front of you is the area for the elementary school students. It takes up the entire width of the gym, sideline to sideline. In the far rear-left corner is Reifton and to the right rear is the junior high. Senior high is in the center. The elementary, Reifton, and junior high lead you in and set the stage for the senior high, and then they all play together. By the end, the entire audience is in awe of the developmental progression. The greatest joy for me as a parent has been watching my son walk to me after his very first string jam, smiling, proudly proclaiming, "I'm going to sound like them one day," pointing to the senior high students. Thanks to all of the professionals in our music department, he made senior county orchestra twice and is traveling with the American Music Abroad Program this summer. Please don't kill this for the potential musicians in your district, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Klein Carr. Next up is Cecilia Brower, please state your name and address at the podium.
My name is Cecilia Brower, I live at Two Valley Drive. First of all, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak here today. As a lifelong Exeter resident, I have been involved with Exeter music for almost eight years. And in that time, being involved, I've found a place where I belong, a place where I can express myself, my love, and my talent. All of my, almost all of my past elementary, senior high teachers are actually here tonight and they have helped me find myself and who I'm capable of in terms of music. Many current Exeter music students, like behind me, can speak of their positive, positive experiences with elementary school music courses. It's led almost all of us to where we are today. I'll be fully honest when I say I didn't know how to react or respond when I first found out about the threats to cut music programs. I felt a mix of emotions, sadness, anger, and most of all, determination. Determination to stand here tonight and hopefully help the music community. As a future elementary music education major, I knew that I wanted to make a difference here today. I have so many teachers, family members, even neighbors, like my neighbor Stephanie who spoke here last time, last time. And they wanted to stand up for me and the music department to help make a difference. Now, if you recall Mrs. Crotty's earlier statement when she was recognizing students that went to regionals and districts, specifically, specifically the orchestra students. It was mentioned that those orchestra students all started in third grade, third or fourth grade. Now, Exeter is recognized as one of the best music, has, having one of the best music programs in Berks County. And what's just coming to my head is, these students behind me were in those elementary programs. If we cut those orchestra programs for future students, will they be able to achieve the same things that these students behind me did? Because I know that elementary orchestra did make a difference for these students. I know that it led them to be who they are. Now, I do believe that some people who aren't involved in music, they do struggle with the belief that music can be this important. But as someone who personally has so much passion, I'm here to communicate to the board and to the public that it is so important. It is important to students, teachers, parents, and most importantly, it's important to the community. Music in any shape or form has the power to bring the people and the community together, and that's a big power. And as I speak to the board and the public, I'm not afraid to admit that I'm scared. I have been since the beginning, I'm afraid to see what the future holds in terms of cuts for music programs. I don't want this to be the outcome, I want to see these Exeter students strive like they always have. I actually rehearsed with the senior high 1112 orchestra earlier today, they have their concert in two days. I played flute one. They are so talented, I know that elementary programs were part of that, that led them to how talented the senior high orchestra is. So please, I urge, I urge the board to reconsider, reconsider these cuts for music, not only for the students, but for the community as a whole. And I'm going to do my best and my part to continue to let the art of music flourish in Exeter Township. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brower. Next is Shelley Brower, please state your name and address at the podium.
Good evening, my name is Shelley Brower, excuse me. And I live at Two Valley Drive. Many concerned citizens and students have already spoken about the benefits and value of music education in general. So I would like to focus on the specific program that's currently in jeopardy, and that is the third and fourth grade strings program. I think one of the main things we need to focus on here is that the school board and the community are here to represent the students, to be the voice that speaks up for them when they cannot do so themselves, and to provide them with the best educational opportunities possible. The third and fourth grade strings program is an educational opportunity that is already in place. And yet, we are talking about taking it away. It's an educational opportunity that many, many students take advantage of, place value on, and benefit from. And yet, those very students are being sent the message that it's not important enough to keep. My daughter, who you just heard from, is now a sophomore. She started the violin in third grade with the early strings program. She was so excited to start learning the violin and she gained so much that first year besides just music fundamentals. She learned responsibility in caring for her instrument, discipline in keeping up with practicing, teamwork and collaboration in playing in both small and large groups with her friends and peers, and in working towards a common goal, and a sense of community by performing in school concerts for family and friends. She also participated in the string jam, which was mentioned earlier, which is a huge concert that Exeter does every year, including all string students from grades three through 12. It's an amazing opportunity for the youngest beginners to get to perform with the high schoolers and for them to see just how far their hard work and dedication can take them in the future. I credit these early experiences with the strings program for sparking my daughter's interest and joy in music and leading her to want to learn other instruments and participate in Exeter's concert band, marching band, jazz band, chorus, and school musicals. The elementary strings and band programs at Exeter provide students with the opportunity to learn the lifelong skill of playing an instrument starting at an early age, an age where children are most receptive to new learning experiences, and an age which allows them ample time to build the early skills needed for future success. Many of these elementary students wouldn't have this opportunity otherwise due to the considerable cost and time investment of taking private lessons outside of school. considerable cost and time investment of taking private lessons outside of school. In conclusion, I invite all of you to attend the Exeter Orchestra Concert this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the high school, so you can see firsthand how dedicated these students are to the strings program. These are the students who started learning in third and fourth grade, the students who represent the third and fourth graders who are just now getting their start, and whose voices we are speaking up for this evening. Exeter students have an invaluable educational opportunity at their fingertips with early music programs, an opportunity that benefits both the students and the community. Let's not take that opportunity away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brower. Next is Amy Ipsen. You could state your name and address at the podium, please.
Amy Ipsen, Ten Overlook Drive. I would like to, first of all, thank the district tonight for the recognition of those of us who went to regions and states. I'm honored. I would like to say just one thing, though. I think that it is incredible that we had so many strong players make counties, districts, regions, and states. That being said, had I not started in third grade, I would not be here, standing right by this podium today. And I think that many of my peers would agree. We are able to make you guys proud and represent Exeter because we started in third grade, which is what makes Exeter's music program so incredibly strong. If you knock out our foundation, you'll have no one to recognize in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ipsen. Next is Riley Mazur. If you could state your name and address at the podium, please.
My name's Riley Mazur. I live at 55 Winchester Court. Like Amy said, I just want to say thank you for recognizing us, and I want to reiterate what she said, that a lot of us would not be here had we not started in elementary school. If I'm not mistaken, almost all of us, if not all of us, started at third and fourth grade. I started in fourth grade. I would not be here, like Amy said. Wouldn't be here without that. I came to Exeter in second grade. I was not born here. I came from Delaware, moved here in second grade, and I started band in fourth grade. And that was like, it was a difficult time for me when I was moving, and going into music made it so much easier, and I know it has for so many other kids. And I hope you read our essays, by the way. If you did, I know that you saw all of our stories, and that you recognize from those stories that by cutting that, by cutting elementary music, you will be cutting something very important to a lot of us, and something that will be very important to a lot of future kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mazur. Bill Kaufman. Please state your name and address at the podium.
My name's Bill Kaufman. I live at 32 Longview Drive, Birdsboro. I heard that there was talk the third and fourth grade music was going to end, and just a simple search on Google, you can come up, and Scientific Origin is one that came up for me. They listed 20 benefits of the music, learning an instrument. Not going to list all of them, but some of them. Improves cognitive functions, enhances coordination and motor skills, boosts memory retention, reduces stress and anxiety, enhances creativity, enhances listening skills, encourages teamwork, and enhances academic performance. Isn't that what the school's for? So rather than going through and reiterating what lots of people have done, these guys are the best, and they deserve to be recognized. But I have a challenge for all of you. As a parent, we do not do class rank at Exeter. So what I am asking for is not confidential information. What I would like to know is, out of the last five graduating classes, what percent of the top 10 kids participated in the music program? What percent of the top 20 kids participated in the music program? I would like to see those numbers and have you share them with us, parents, because I would find it fascinating to see what those numbers are, because I know what I think they are based on the people that I know. And if we cut that program and those numbers go, why have a school district? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. That is the end of the agenda item signup sheet. Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on agenda items before I move on? Okay, seeing none, we are going to go ahead and move forward. Next is board meeting minutes. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from the April 8, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting and the April 23, 2025 Board Voting Meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests, or if there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the April 2025 Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests dated April 24, 2025 to May 19, 2025. Hearing no objections, the Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests are approved. We are going to go move on to committees now with education with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, starting with the enrollment report, it is listed and attached there for you to take a look at. And then we also have to report field trips within the 60-mile radius that have already been approved, and there are three that have been added on there. Next, we will be voting to amend the Title I Letter of Agreement. Dr. Hoyt spoke with me and said we have already approved this in September, but this is a revision due to funding adjustments for Title I. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached amendment to the Title I Letter of Agreement between Exeter Township School District and the Berks County Intermediate Unit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items, the following field trips outside of the 60-mile radius, the senior high school varsity baseball team traveling to Walt Disney World.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items, the following list of staff conferences, and you will see that there have been some added, and Dr. Hoyt is going to speak about those.
Second.
Second at first, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. As a motion and a second, any discussion?
So, good evening. Just for some updates with regards to this, as I mentioned the last time, because we have some teachers who are retiring and some changes with regards to our Advanced Placement AP courses, those courses, in some cases, either require or highly recommend going to the AP Institute. So that's what the AP ones reference. For regards to the CPR one, we do have teacher, we do certify students in CPR in our Advanced Wellness Class, and that does require us to have a CPR certified instructor. That is something that I can use Title IV funds in order to pay for the cost of that registration. And with the new AP Environmental Course, that will be partially funded for the registration. We can use environmental education as a means for Title IV. Thomas Craver was selected to be an AP reader, so that is funded by the Advanced Placement Institute. That's where they go out and actually assess AP scores and AP tests within there. But again, with the changes that we've had to staff for our AP Physics for, and our new course for the AP Seminar, and with the new AP Environmental Course, those are what those are justified for.
Okay, any other discussion?
So just, I just want to make sure I understand. So we, we have three teachers that are being replaced that need to take the AP classes, is that correct, Dr. Hoyt?
So physics is the replacement. AP Research is, or Seminar is a brand-new course, and the other course is also Environmental is a brand-new course, so.
I thought it counted four courses. Forgive me.
Yeah, the, the computer science one is not a training. That is just being, he was selected to be an assessment reader, so he has been teaching AP. This is an opportu, it's actually great professional development as well, because you get an idea of how they score things. I did, I was an AP reader for AP Calculus a number of many years ago, and it's a great opportunity, like I said, just to see what are some of the things that they look for with regards to how students are, are scoring those assessments.
And I don't know if you know this, and I'm sorry that I just, I'm throwing this at you, so if you don't know it, it's fine, but do you know how many kids take these AP classes and pass them by chance, or pass the test, excuse me?
I can get, off the top of my head, I do not know those, but I mean, we, we have, when we did our, our board report on the data back in the winter, I believe, we did list the number of students that were enrolled and the number of students that scored, but I can get that information to the board, so. That will be updated, because we, we have AP classes that end in December, and then we also have AP classes that end in May. We usually get those scores in July, and then myself, Dr. Elkaro, Dr. Haller, we get together, and, and we look at that as part of the whole data profile with regards to Keystone's and our PSSAs as well, but we can get you the most updated figures as they come along.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Hoyt, you said there are two new courses?
Yes.
Two new AP courses?
APs.
When will they be offered for the first time?
For next year. So they, they were in our Soaring Eagle, which is what our course catalog is, is for our high school students. So the AP Environmental Course is just another opportunity for science, for maybe students who don't want to take physics or chemistry. It's a wonderful course. I've worked in other districts where it's offered. It typically has high enrollment. And then the AP Seminar is considered a capstone course, where students engage in research skills, digital literacy, they develop a capstone project, so that is a brand-new course. That is the course that does require the teacher, whoever that may be, to, they must attend the AP Institute for that.
Okay, and do you have any sense of what the enrollment might be? I mean, the interest expressed by students so far?
Yeah, we did have students who did select that, but we are still working on scheduling, so students have an opportunity still to, you know, they're working with their counselors and high school administration to just finalize things. But once we get those final numbers, I can certainly share that with the board as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And I will be bringing to the next meeting the AP Environmental Textbook that is recommended by the AP that goes along with that, whereas the AP Seminar is more of just resources and such, and the physics one is already in place.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items, three through six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. We'll move on to personnel with Dr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items. Any items in bold have been added or changed since the Committee of a Home meeting. Item one, resignation. Two, retirement. Three, appointments. Four, transfers. Five, change of status. Six, additional assignments. And seven, leaves of absences.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Are we hiring another senior high science teacher? Because I see where we have an English teacher going out and a substitute coming in, a substitute for social studies coming in, but I see a secondary teacher for the entire school year, the secondary science teacher, excuse me, and I don't see one going out, so I didn't.
So earlier this year, you accepted two retirements, one for Mr. Lasky and one for Mrs. Winehold, I believe, and we opted to not replace Mr. Lasky's position, but we do have to replace the other position. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is.
Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Herring, can I just request that item nine be pulled out separately too?
Sure.
Thank you.
It is recommended that the Board approves and ratifies the following personnel items, item eight, 10, and 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can we have a little bit of an explanation of what that is?
Yeah, I can answer that. Which particular item are you referencing?
Just in general, why we're putting these on.
Okay, so every May, we put on our summer list of faculty and staff that are going to be working over the summer. The extended contracts are for teachers and guidance counselors and psychologists to work over the summer to get prepared for the next school year. We also have our extended school year for our special needs students and teachers and aides coming in, and then that also requires our transportation department to, you know, transport our students, so they're on there as well. And then the secretaries, majority of our secretaries only work full-time school year, which means they're only here 211 days or 188 days. So over the summer, our buildings are basically just manned by the principals, so we do offer a few days for the secretaries to come in per diem to help get the buildings ready for the next school year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board approves and ratifies item nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? The reason I requested this be pulled out is my spouse is listed, so I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain. Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies item 12, the attached list of course requests.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And that's everything, Mr. Mall.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. We're going to break up the consent agenda a little bit today. First up, it is recommend, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following finance and audit items. Numbers one, transfer, budget transfers for 4196.29. Number two, the attached letter and resolution for cyber charter reform, and number three, the Board of School Directors appoints the following voting delegates, Dr. Battler and Dr. Herring.
Sorry, can you take two out?
Okay, I'm going to back up here.
Okay.
My apologies. We are going to redo this. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following finance and audit items, budget transfers in the amount of 4196.29.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Number two, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the attached letter and resolution for cyber charter reform.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes have it, motion carries.
Number three, it is recommended the Board of School Directors appoint the following voting delegates to participate in the PSBA Delicate Assembly to be held on Tuesday, October 21, 2025, Dr. Andrea Battler, Dr. Ann Herring.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Number four, it is recommended the Board of School Directors appoint Sweet, Stevens, Katz, and Williams as a solicitor for the Exeter Township School District. The 2025-26 fee agreement is attached.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors adopt the proposed final general budget for the 2025-2026 school year with a budgeted revenue of $89,314,814, and budgeted expenditures of $89,230,120.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have some questions. I was going through the budget this week, and what I did was I printed out the proposed budget for '25-'26 and overlapped it with the proposed budget from '24-'25. For those of you that are following along, I'm looking at pages 14 through 16 of the attachment. My first question, Mr. Feig, is under special programs, elementary and secondary, what exactly is identified as special programs?
Special education, it's all student special needs.
And the largest-
Self-autistic learning support, those types.
And the largest delta is in 500 other purchase services? Is that in referring to outsourcing?
Privates, well, it also, 500's are really, we have the cyber charter for special education. We also have PRI, which is private residential institutions. We have private placements. So, or private placements use $80,000 to $100,000 a year just per student. So the 500's outs, it's not just outsourcing, it's programs we don't offer directly. Special needs programs.
And just so that we all understand, these are programs that are mandated, correct?
Correct.
We have to have these programs.
Correct.
Okay. Second question. On page 15, under Support Services Business, can you explain what that is?
That's actually our payroll services, our accounts payable or accounts receivable. It's pretty much the full business office. We run the front desk. We have accounts payable person, we have accountant, we have a payroll person, we have myself, the Assistant Business Manager, the Secretary, but it's all the $89 million being watched.
Services that, in your opinion, are absolutely necessary, correct?
Someone has to pay the bills, yes.
Okay. Next question. Under, page 15 again, under Operation and Maintenance of Plant Services, the largest delta is in Other Purchase Services. It went from 272 and change to 379 and change. Could you explain that?
Over the last couple of years, we've been relying more and more on outside contractors. This past week, we had sewer backup at Lorraine. We only have equipment that can go out 100 feet. We ended up having to bring someone else in to open those lines. Same thing with plumbing and fixtures. We don't have the wherewithal within our own workforce to be able to fix things, or, you know, that requires professional skills. There's been a lot of, I think as Mr. Fiddler would know from before, a lot of deferred maintenance that we're paying the paper now because for years we haven't been doing that maintenance. Now we are doing the maintenance. Two weeks ago, we had to dig up the back, or more like three weeks ago, dig up the back parking lot of the junior high because we had pipes. When they pulled the pipes out, an eight-inch pipe, there was this much room in the center. You couldn't believe it was actually a pipe, but it was that clogged, that no one's cleaned those lines in years, so they actually had to replace the lines. They broke through.
Thank you. Again, services that we are required to use.
Well, we're required to maintain our buildings.
Correct. Okay, page 15 on to page 16. Under Transportation, it's actually on page 15, 500 Other Purchase Services and 700 Property. They were our largest deltas. Is that because of us having to out-service some of our transportation due to employment being low?
Correct. And because of special needs, we still have to transport to these other schools. You know, we pay the tuition, but we have to take those children to those schools daily, so it might be one person on the van going to Hershey or to Bucks County or down to Chester County.
Required services, correct?
Required, yeah, mandated.
16.3% increase year over year.
Correct.
My last question for you-
And other properties, the buses, replacing buses.
That's what I figured. My last question is under Student Activities, Operation of Non-Instructional Services. What does that account for?
Our athletic budget and our clubs.
Our athletic budget and our clubs?
Correct.
Is music under the athletic budget?
The clubs would be, yes.
And it would be all clubs, all sports?
All clubs, all sports.
Okay. All right. What I basically did was I looked at everything and I did a delta, and I wanted to look at anything that was above 6% of an increase in spend. What I didn't point out was salaries and benefits, just simply because the point that most, all of those are contracted-
Correct.
And that we cannot do anything about, and of course, we can't affect the increase to our benefits. So at this time, I have no other questions. It looks like, in my opinion, that the district, when I look at what's flat, year over year, has done an excellent job of trying to create a budget where they're spending the least amount possible with the understanding that there are services that are required and mandated for us to have. So I do appreciate your diligence in doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, could you just please reiterate that we're doing, it would be fall under the 3.25% tax increase, is that correct?
That's correct, so this-
And what services are being eliminated or changed?
This vote with the village is a three, this vote is, the yes in this vote would be in favor of a 3.25%. And if you remember from last meeting, what that includes is that one, and help me out here, Dr. Haller, if I missed this, one teacher position is being eliminated through attrition because of a retirement or a leave, one or the other. One teaching position, the other teaching position is being filled by our current high school librarian services. We will be eliminating the high school librarian, and this does not include taking away the per capita tax.
If you look at page 12, I believe it is, it breaks out your taxes and the percent increase there.
I just wanted to secure and confirm that the music is not going to be adversely affected by any of our decisions here tonight.
Well, we can't say that yet because this is a proposed budget. If we voted no to this proposed budget, we would have to go back to the line to figure out what services did need to be cut, and so I can't say for sure whether that's going to happen or not. And even if this vote were to pass today, obviously, anything can happen after this has been posted for the mandated 20 days before we redeliberate at the June COW, and then, of course, the June voting meeting where we have to vote on the final budget, which again, depends on the way that the board votes. If it is voted in favor of the current budget, then no other programs would be cut at this time. However, if it was not, we would have to go back and figure out what needs, what else needs to be got, cut to meet our financial obligation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to request a roll call.
Yeah, if we could have a roll call vote, Mr. Feig.
Okay, I'm gonna go backwards. Yes is to adopt the proposed. Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Julia Schaefer?
Yes.
Travis Odom?
Yes.
Timothy Morgan?
Yes.
Jason Mill?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
No.
John Fiddler?
No.
Deborah Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
Six yes, three no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. So, proposed final budget has passed, the 6 to 3 vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. That is all for my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Athletics and Extracurricular Activities with Mr. Odom.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Want to start off by congratulating Logan Wegman. He won the District 3, 3A shot put champion, and will move on to the state's boys volleyball. Travels to Central York High tomorrow night for a playoff game at 7:00 PM, and just wanted to shout out to the boys baseball team, who did make it to the quarterfinal round, unfortunately just fell short this evening. So, that is all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Odom. Exeter Community Education Foundation with Mrs. Schaefer.
Many thanks to Exeter Community for joining us this past Friday evening at our fourth annual food truck festival. It was an amazing night, and we hope that everyone who attended had a great time. Thank you to the many vendors, clubs, and food trucks that joined us and continue to support this event. Thank you to the Exeter Township School District Administration for your continued enthusiasm and support for the food truck festival, and extra special thanks to custodians and ground crew for your hard work throughout the day and night. We are so grateful. Many thanks to our volunteers and student volunteers who helped make this event possible. And last, this event will not be possible without the dedication and hard work of our event chair, Kristi Weller. Thank you for making this festival bigger and better each year. Our next event is our annual golf outing on Monday, August 4th, at the Redding Country Club.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. We're going to move on to BCTC Joint Operating Committee and the BCAU Board of Directors with Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Some great news tonight. I'm calling this report the Alpha and Omega for BCTC. First, the Alpha, and this is the really exciting part. You may remember that I talked about the Summer Career Camp at BCTC. That's going to run from June 16th to June 20th. I tried to plug it, and maybe that had some effect, maybe not. But the Exeter Response, 23 students going to this camp, the highest number of any school district in Berks County. So, yay Exeter. Four students from Reifton, 18 students from the junior high, and one homeschool student. The camp, as I say, runs five days from the 16th to the 20th. Each day is devoted to one of the BCTC's 34 programs. Day one is Cosmetology. Day two is the Culinary Arts Function. Day three is the Electrical Occupations Program. Day four is Precision and Computerized Machine Technology, and day five is the Recreational and Power Equipment Technology. So congratulations to us, congratulations to the kids for getting a very early start on what may be very promising careers for them. 23 kids. I think the next highest was Schuylkill Valley with 12. Okay, now for the Omega, another exciting day. On May 1st, Mike Stauffer and Eric Kaler, the directors respectively of the BCTC and the Redding-Muhlenberg CTC, held their third Decision Day. Decision Day is a nationwide initiative that recognizes students, post-high school students going to college, going right into the workforce, or going into the military. And I think the essence of these days, Decision Day, which I hope Exeter jumps on this bandwagon sometime soon, can be best captured in the quotes from Mike Stauffer and Mr. Kaler. Mike said, and I quote, "Each student has made a decision that deserves to be celebrated." And I wholeheartedly agree. I'm going to repeat that. "Each student has made a decision that deserves to be celebrated." And Mr. Kaler from the Redding-Muhlenberg Center said, "Decision Day is more than just a ceremony. It's a celebration of purpose, direction, and the incredible potential our students bring to the table." So as I say, I hope Exeter jumps on this bandwagon someday and has its, has our own Decision Day. We join such leaders as BCTC and the RMCTC, and some of our fellow school districts across the county have decided to hold Decision Days. So that's my report, the Alpha and Omega. We see the very beginning, kids who may be going to BCTC, and the kids who are making very exciting plans for graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Moving on to Legislative PSBA Liaison, Mrs. Schaefer.
Okay, I'll start with legislative report. This past week, the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and the Pennsylvania Senate convened in Harrisburg and is now adjourned. The House Education Committee met to consider a significant package of bills aimed at addressing teacher shortages across the Commonwealth. The Senate Education Committee hosted a hearing on truancy and chronic absenteeism, and the House and Senate are now set to both reconvene on June 2nd. I'll just highlight a couple that were voted out of the Senate. One was Weapons on School Campuses Notification. The legislation will require schools to notify all parents and educators when a student, parent, educator, or other individual is found to be in possession of a weapon on school grounds. School-sponsored activities, transportation with no exceptions. The other one is Universal FASFA completion. So this is legislation that require all students to file a FASFA or an opt-out form prior to completing high school. So this would be a new graduation requirement, and PSBA is opposed to this bill. A lot in the House Education Committee passed packages of bills that would intend to reduce barriers to employment, creating flexibility for employees and expanding the pool of those eligible to become professional educators. One highlighted is that updated teacher certification levels, House Bill 1407. This legislation would update Pennsylvania's teacher certification levels as follows. Primary, pre-K, kindergarten, grades one through six or ages three through 11. Secondary, grades six through 12 or ages 11 through 21. Elsewhere, there was a, I think I mentioned this before, playoff reform for the PIA. This legislation would allow for the Pennsylvania Interschool Athletic Association to establish separate playoff systems and championships for boundary and non-boundary schools, which are charter and private. And it would level the playing field, and that was voted out of the committee with significant bipartisan support, and PSBA is in support of this legislation. Let's see here, PSBA liked to thank, "Thank you to everyone who made the trip to Harrisburg for PSBA Advocacy Day. The efforts can lead to great impacts on behalf of public education. There are over 100 members who signed up, and over 100 meetings scheduled to meet with the legislators to talk about cyber charter reform, school infrastructure improvements, and relief from unfunded mandates." And I will turn it over to Mr. Mel, who can speak to his attendance at Advocacy Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Yes, I went up to Harrisburg on Advocacy Day. It was Tuesday, May 13th. PSBA set up the appointments to meet with the representatives of the state. So I met with Bill Evans, who is the Chief of Staff for Judy Schwenk, Senator Judy Schwenk, met directly with Representative Rusnok, and unfortunately, there was not a meeting that was scheduled for Representative Gillen, but I did drop off materials for him to review. And as Mrs. Schaefer stated, the three main focus points that essentially that we're talking with our legislators on is cyber charter reform, which we've already taken one step towards that tonight with that resolution that we passed. The other areas were mandate relief. As you know, a lot of the issues that we face here in public education are mandates pushed down to us from the state that are either unfunded or underfunded. And, you know, it's, usually it's the school boards that get yelled at for that, not the state. So it's very essential for us to put pressure back on the state to help us in that regard and help fund those mandates. And then the last one is the infrastructure support. So that is mainly around coming up with some kind of financial support for schools that are in dire need of facility upgrades and that sort of thing. There was a program in years past called PlanCon that helped in that regard, and essentially, PSBA and the membership is looking to get the state to offer something similar to that in the future here.
Can I just add?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Haller.
So, you know, it's ironic that Mrs. Schaefer just went through the list of legislation that they're proposing while Mr. Mel was just at Harrisburg advocating for less mandates, and this proposal with the FASFA is one of those unfunded mandates. So, we have close to 1,400 students at our high school, and we have, you know, our classes average around 300, some give or take. And for the state to come in and say, "Now you're going to make sure that every student fills out that very complicated document, that process, or get the opt-out form, or this child won't graduate," which then directly impacts how school districts are viewed across the state, is, in my opinion, just wrong. And if a school district like Exeter could potentially struggle with a mandate like that, because we have five school counselors that, again, meet the needs of students, nine through 12, then what are some of our urban counterparts? How are they going to deal with something like this? So, again, you know, we can sit here at the table, and many of us have gone to Harrisburg, and we have made our point very clear about these- about these unfunded mandates, but yet they continue to push them forward on school districts with no additional support or funding, and leave school boards like Exeter's to make very difficult decisions about raising taxes to either maintain programs that are critical to student success beyond a K-12 education, or meet a mandate that I'm not sure sometimes why they're putting it on the table. So I just felt like it was important to point that out.
That's very accurate. So yeah, essentially, the two meetings that I was in went well. I can't speak for all Berks County districts. I do know that as far as attendance of the same representatives, there was one individual from the Ole Valley School Board that was there with me speaking to the representatives. So, yeah, it's, even though not all of us can be attendants, I encourage all board members and the public to continue to send emails, make phone calls to your state representatives for these pieces of reform, as well as anything else you think that the state needs to do a better job of. Because ultimately, you know, our funding and our taxing and everything else that happens here in the district is greatly impacted by what happens at the state, so.
Can I just add one more thing, and just more question? PSBA, and I think I did send it out yesterday, they have a report every year that they do, which include all of the mandates, and it's approximately 80 pages long, probably 75 worth of context. But is that something that we can share?
I don't.
Just if anyone wants to look at, see what we are mandated to do.
And I don't see why not. And Dr. Hackman at the IU has been leading a team to go through those mandates and has been consulting with Dr. Smith through the Executive Director, through PASA, to see if there is some way that we can ask for some reforms to give school districts relief from these mandates. And so it's just, it's just really disheartening when we've been so vocal about that, to advocate for where we believe money should go to, and yet someone thought that was a good idea. So it's, you know, you just sometimes wonder if they're listening. And are they making the best decisions on behalf of kids?
And I know one way we can, other than advocating, go to Advocacy Day like Mr. Mall did, PSBA does, you know, routinely send out campaign reliefs. And I did publish those to you guys, and they've been in a lot of the documentation. We received an email. So they do have a mandate relief campaign as well, an infrastructure campaign. So I highly recommend that you review those, because it does help show that we are advocating for the students and taxpayers in our district to get some relief on their burden.
Anything else, Mrs. Schaefer?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Couple things. First of all, just a reminder that tomorrow is the primary election. Polls open up tomorrow morning. There are a lot of things that will be on the ballot, including a lot of things affecting, directly affecting local government within the township and the borough. Number two, Reading Country Club is, as everyone knows, now privately owned and is open for business. My wife and I did have the opportunity to go out to dinner there a couple weeks ago. The food was fantastic and great to have another spot in town to go. Number three, and I can't remember if I mentioned this last time, but the apartments that are supposed to go in behind Hope Depot, the next step for that was approved. So just be on the lookout for that. I don't know that they said a actual start date for construction yet. Did you hear, Mr. Mall, if there was?
I don't think so. I think there's still some more approval processes and things that have to happen before there's a definitive date. At least, that was my assumption.
Very good. And that's, I believe, 100, is it 120 units?
216 units.
216 units.
A mix of one and two-bedroom apartments.
Thank you.
But according to statistics, only 13 children.
Well, time will tell. Finally, I know Mr. Hoffman left, but I did want to acknowledge our Exeter Township Fire Department. Is he still here? Oh, hi, there you are. I do want to publicly acknowledge our Exeter Township Fire Department. One, I do think it's worth noting that we do have several students that are on the department. They certainly provide a fantastic service to our community, as well as other communities. For those of you that did not hear about it, they were, there were several firemen, firewomen that were announced at the township meeting last week for their heroic commitment and two structure fires that they responded to outside of our township and borough, which they currently cover. So they're out there helping our neighbors as much as they are us. And in this case, we did have three of our local firefighters that were injured and had to be hospitalized. Thank goodness, they are on their way to recovery and, from my understanding, doing well. But I do want to acknowledge their commitment that they have every day. So thank you very much. That's all for me, Mr. Mall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next, we have public comment on non-agenda items. No one has signed up for that portion unless someone would like to come up and give public comment yet. Go ahead. Could you state your name and address at the podium, please?
Cooper Devlin, 509 Shelbourne Road. I would like to strongly speak against the elimination of the library position, once again. As an example of what the library has meant to me is, in a project for AP Lang that I was in, we had to do a cereal box on a memoir. And I was walking around the library, and I see on this, perfectly on display, a memoir. The first one I see, Hillbilly Elegy. Now, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with J.D. Vance's homemade policies, but I liked the book. I thought, I actually, yeah, it was a really good book. I felt a lot, I felt a little better about the outcome of the election due to this book. So it bridged Ms. Gajewski's placement of that one book, which might not happen if it's a teacher that is being forced everywhere, and then they have one period where they have to manage the library. I don't think that would have happened. So that helped bridge a political gap. And for AP Gov, another research project where we were in the library, once again. My group, we were researching the death penalty, and we found, I think, five books total that we flipped through to do some research. We, I think, ended up using one of them in our presentation. As far as it's working on, it's a continuing project. And it's really helpful, and I'm not sure if we would have found that without Mrs. Gajewski. I plead you to consider cutting from somewhere else or to raise taxes if need be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. And go ahead, sir. If you could state your name and address at the podium, please.
Hi, my name is David Schwank. I live at 4376 Painters Sky Road. I am an educator for 28 years. I'm also the father of Andrew Schwank, the composer. So, and I just can't say enough about the music program here at Exeter. For my daughter and my son, it has been one of the best parts of their entire time here at Exeter, which is saying something, because the entire experience at Exeter has been wonderful. I want to speak, though, to both the librarian and the music program being dropped. And I want to speak to this in the context of the modern world. We have a world today in which they're being asked to navigate an AI future, a social media future, that they don't fully understand, nor do we. Our librarians are the ones who are helping to navigate that future. They help with research, as Cooper pointed out wonderfully, not there, that's Cooper. And as he pointed out so accurately, they're the ones that help guide these students to better sources to understand what is valuable, what is right, what is true, versus what is false. They are invaluable to teachers like me, who lean on them at our high school. I teach at O&amp;J. My high school, Amy Christman, is invaluable to helping those students navigate that, and a tremendous tool for us. The teacher who put in that position would do their level best, but they are not, they don't have the librarian skills that a trained librarian does. That is its own position, a unique skill set, that a teacher can't simply replicate on their own. So by losing that, you're losing a tool that's going to help these students navigate a future, a world that constantly is hitting them with so much information that they're not always sure where to go or what to turn to that's valuable or correct. The music program, on the other hand, gives them connection. We are a world that is divided, separated from each other, and not connected. We do not have community. We stare at screens. We carry around cell phones. I mean, how many school districts right now are debating cellphone use? I know, I see it every day. It is a constant battle. Music is the antithesis of that. It is the absolute opposite of the divided social media world we have. It demands you pay attention. It demands that you play as a band, that you play as an orchestra, that you are a one person of a group, of a team, playing together, all right? I don't dismiss sports. I don't dismiss any activity, all right? But it seems to me, as a parent and a taxpayer in the district, that this team is world championship caliber. And you are undermining that ability for them to be that. You are taking away a resource at the high school that allows students to better understand the world they're about to go into, and you're taking away a resource that helps students understand themselves and to play together and to be a community. And I, as a taxpayer and as a parent, as an educator, cannot abide by that. It is a wrong decision, and I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwank. And I'm sorry, go ahead, sir, if you want to come up. State your name and address at the podium.
My name's Andrew Schwank. I live at 4376 Painters Sky Road. Thanks, Dad. I'm going to talk a little about the music thing here at Exeter. All right. At Exeter, we are blessed to have a music program that is unlike any other schools in Berks County. I'm reading off of a really small phone right here, I'm sorry. Exeter has routinely been selected as one of the best school districts for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation, and has frequently sent talented musicians to festivals at the county, district, regional, and even state levels. Just this year, as they were recognized, Exeter had the privilege of sending four students to the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's All-State Music Festival, the most the district has ever sent to the festival in a while. The success, oh my gosh, the success of the music education, oh my gosh, sorry. The success of music at Exeter is a byproduct of the continuous support of the music program. I'm stumbling over my words. I'm so sorry.
No problem. Take your time.
The success of the music at Exeter is a byproduct of the continued support of the music program has received from the school district and the product of the kind, hard-working, and astute music teachers that our district has to offer. Cutting funding from the arts program at Exeter would certainly put Exeter's reputation in the arts at risk, putting our long-built credibility in jeopardy. As a student at Exeter, I've been part of the music program since third grade, when I started out with cello at Lorraine Elementary. From then, I've gone to be actively involved with music at Exeter, performing in ensembles like orchestra, marching band, and jazz band. Through Exeter's music program, I've been able to grow and develop as a musician in a variety of ways through the numerous resources and opportunities it provides. In addition, playing a role in Exeter's music program has not just developed me as a young musician, but as a student as well. Music at Exeter has not just taught me how to play scales on my instruments, but it's taught me important life lessons, like the importance of hard work, discipline, humility, and perseverance. Okay. Having music in the greater arts within our schools has many benefits, not just for me, but for all students across Exeter and schools across the country. According to the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, the arts in our schools have helped to build well-rounded students, grow appreciation for other cultures, support social and emotional development, and develop valuable life and career skills, among a plethora of other benefits. Additionally, arts programs have had other positive impacts on students academically. On average, students who have spent four more years in an art program within their schools score 150 points higher on the SAT than students who have been in their arts program for two years or less, according to a 2016 report released by College Board. Arts programs within our schools have also helped aid more disadvantaged students in their path to academic success. Excuse me. According to research conducted by the National Endowment for the Arts, students of lower socioeconomic statuses who participate in their school arts programs have a dropout rate of only 4%. School arts programs at Exeter and across the country are aiding students, not only in their musical endeavors, but their academic journeys as well. Ensuring that Exeter's art programs stay fully staffed and fully funded is extremely important, as they are helpful for hundreds of students here at Exeter, providing them not only with exceptional music experience, but with an academic advantage as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwank. Also, I just want to let you know that I just received your written letter or typed letter to the school board, and I will share that with my colleagues here later. Who else would like to come up? We've got plenty of hands. Go ahead. If you could state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Ava Diaz, and I live at 61 Ogden Drive. While I strongly speak for the music program, I also believe that you should not eliminate the librarian position. While Ms. Gajewski is an amazing help in the library, she is more than just a librarian. She helps students anytime they need assistance in the library, not just with finding specific books and navigating it, but helping them find the right fit book for maybe a research project or just to find a good book to read. I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but recently, within the past school year, there has been struggles with freshman classes or underclassmen struggling to read. I definitely have heard this from friends of mine who are apprenticing in English classes in the junior high and even in the high school. And they are struggling to read and even write and differentiate words and grammar. Eliminate the librarian position would not only progress that issue, but it would also definitely not, you know, help solve the problem. Because English teachers in general, they are not focused on only helping students read. That is honestly, at the higher grade levels, one of their least problems to worry about. They are focused on the generalizing of teaching students reading, writing, and grammar skills within one class. Reading should be their least of worries. And eliminating the librarian who helps students pick books for their own reading level and personal enjoyment, that would not help the issues that are occurring in these classes. But in the case of eliminating the librarian, do not turn on the music program, because the music program, as everyone who here has spoken already, is equally as important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Cecilia? Could state your name and address, please, at the podium.
Hi again, my name is Cecilia Brower. I live at 2 Valley Drive. I wasn't planning on coming up here again to defend the librarian position, but as you guys went through this meeting, I just thought of more and more reasons why I thought it was necessary to come up here and speak for her. I'm in study hall with her in the library every single day. I'm in school, unless the schedule is messed up, like it has been lately with the Keystone's. But today, I was in study hall with her, and I was talking to her about this board meeting. And I was telling her how I was going to stand up for the music department and hopefully make a difference. And she said that she's going to watch me, because she hopes that I can make a difference, because she cares. Ms. Gajewski isn't just a library, and she goes, she steps, like, outside of her job to help students, not only with finding a book or hoping she can help students love to read. Back in November, I had a fractured knee, and I was in the library with her, and I expected a student to come help me carry my things, since I had crutches. No student came to help, and there was a fire drill. And I needed to get down the stairs in order to get out of the building. And the student said they'd come and help me, and they never did. So Ms. Gajewski, while she was supposed to lead all of her students out of the library, she went out of her way to carry my stuff, to help me get down the stairs so I wouldn't break the rules and use the elevator. Along with that, I have never, I wasn't ever really much of a reader growing up, according to my parents. Apparently, I was an early reader, but I never really got into it. But when I got to the high school, she changed that for me. And I feel like that is so important, because I think that every student should love I feel like that is so important, because I think that every student should love to read. I have the belief that they just need to find the right genre that they get into, and she helped me to do that. And I feel like now that not only do I know how to navigate a high school library, that's going to help me with my overall education, because now that she helped me find everything, that's helping me with, you know, my future college study. I feel that that's going to help me with my college applications, because now that she showed me where I can find everything on music, history of music, whatever that might be, she's helped me. She's potentially, and probably did, helped my future. So I believe that if you do eliminate the high school librarian, you are possibly limiting students' potential to get into a good college, because you are limiting their research resource. So I urge the board to please, please reconsider, because it may be, I think school librarians are seriously misunderstood, because not only is Ms. Gieske, she's there to just help students with their research projects, or help us find good databases. She goes outside of her job and helps students with not only just education, but she helps them personally. And her watching me right now, I hope to make her proud, because I care about her, I care about her position, and I care about her dedication to me, to help me get into the college that I want to get into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brower. Amy, did you still want to come up and speak?
Yes.
Name and address, please, again.
Amy Ipsen, Ten Overlook Drive. I am Ms. G.'s biggest offender. If she has no fans, I am dead. So, it seems that you often tend to overlook things that you would rather not face. I see time and time again, as I do spend a majority of my day in the library, that Mr. Campbell seems to show up at the worst times. He shows up when there are maybe five of us in there for a study hall, supported study hall, that has been put on Ms. G. as Mr. Campbell says that she was not doing enough. He does not come in when she is facilitating sixty students at the same time. As a future psychologist, children need to have a source of comfort, and I see that Ms. G. is that source of comfort for so many kids. Even the most rough kids that you wouldn't, you would think they don't even want to be here, they come in and they see Ms. G., and they give her a hug every day. It's great. So, I forget who, but somebody asked about how many AP students there are. I think a majority of us are all AP students. I take five AP classes, two of which are online, incredibly hard to navigate. Ms. G. has helped me with every assignment. She's helped me with every essay. So, she has all been our teacher at one time or another, and to restrict her to one single classroom and a subject, you would not only be stripping students of a resource, but also teachers. My mother, Tina Clark Ipsen, is a teacher at Wilson, and she wishes that she could have a resource like Ms. G. And what Ava said is right. As someone who is teaching freshmen currently, these kids are struggling. They, they don't know how to read, they don't know how to write. Some of them do, but many don't. I had a kid lean over to me, actually this morning, and asked me how to spell act, the word act, A-C-T. He thought it was A-C-H, act. Ms. G. is there for those kids, and Ms. G. is there for the kids who don't even think they need her. She's always there. She's so much more important than many of you realize, because frankly, you haven't been in school for a while, and you have all these first-person perspectives telling you that we need her. The library isn't just books anymore. It's online databases that, frankly, some of them you can't trust. They are put on, online, and you can't trust them. AI, many a time, has led us astray. So, we need somebody to tell us the difference between right and wrong. So as both the Schwanks said, to take away Ms. Gieske's position and put her into one classroom would be an injustice to students and teachers alike. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ipsen. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, Ms. Mazur. If you could give your name and address again at the podium.
I'm Riley Mazur. I live at fifty-five Winchester Court. Just something that's been bothering me throughout the entire board discussion about the librarian. She is not the librarian. Her name is Ms. Gieske. I think it's important that we acknowledge her as a human being with value, rather than simply a job position that drains the district's funds. Secondly, I would like to emphasize her value as a resource, research resource, and a source of career inspiration. In tenth grade of English, I don't know if it's the same for all tenth grade of English. I was in honors. I know this is the case for honors. Our final project is a large research project. I chose to research something called extrasensory, extrasensory perception, which is basically like, is, is the, is the term sixth sense a real thing? And Ms. Gieske was a really valuable resource for me with that, because we spent time in the library, and she helped us navigate the online resources and find sources for our research. This indirect, I didn't realize it at the time, but this indirectly pushed me towards my current major, which is going to be psychology. And I don't believe that I would have reached that point without that project or without her assistance. Thirdly, Ms. G. is an approachable figure for every student in the high school, which is unique. For a lot of kids, it might feel strange or uncomfortable to contact or come to teachers outside of their normal scheduled time. With Ms. Gieske, this isn't the case. She is an accessible, deeply educated woman that makes it possible for students to ask questions and learn new things whenever they feel the need to. If she is moved to, to a standard classroom, as is planned, she, no long, she is no longer available the way she currently is, and she becomes another teacher that may be difficult to approach outside of standard classroom time. I know the plan is not to fire Ms. Gieske, but I think it's very important to consider her value as a librarian. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mazur. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move on. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Fit.
I hope the board will indulge me just two more minutes. Besides my activities here, I'm also secretary of the Exeter High School Eagles Alumni Association, and I'm very pleased and proud to announce that we recently awarded more than forty thousand dollars in scholarships to students going on to both colleges and trade schools. We've opened that up so that if a student is going to a trade school, or even into a, the workforce, and needs to buy an expensive tool, he or she can apply for one of these scholarships. I would also like to engage in a bit of shameless promotion and say, and remind the parents out there that lifetime memberships for the association are just ten dollars, so if you're looking for that extra gift for your graduate, a ten-dollar gift is, is not too much. And that money goes right into our investment funds, mostly CDs, so that we can give away forty thousand dollars next year. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Murray.
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our students that came up to the podium day, today, to come. And it doesn't matter what you're passionate about. We're all passionate about something, but getting up to that podium is extremely intimidating. Once again, you've impressed me with how articulate you are. If you were nervous, I certainly couldn't tell. While you're not taxpayers yet, one day you will be, and I would encourage all of you to do exactly what you're doing tonight, as you become taxpayers, and, and get involved in your local government and understand what's going on, because I think it's a, it's an asset that we all could learn from. So appreciate you guys all being here. Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Morgan would also like to remind you, once you turn eighteen, let him know, because we want to make sure we get you on the per capita tax. Just kidding. All right. I just have, we have one, one reminder on my end. Obviously, tonight, we, we voted on the proposed final budget. As, as was said earlier, we still have one more round to go, so in June, we have the June Cal Meeting, the Committee of the Whole Meeting, where we have one kind of last heavy round of discussion around the budget, and then obviously our June voting meeting is when we vote on the final budget. So right now, where we stand, as a reminder, is, is three-point-two-five percent for, for a tax increase, and that's with maintaining all programs and obviously shifting the librarian position that was mentioned, as well as one elimination, teacher elimination through attrition. The, the other thing I'd just like to remind the board is, here at these decisions, at these meetings, we speak as one, we speak as, as whatever the majority decision is, so I just want to remind everyone here at the table that we, we need to make sure that we're not giving conflicting information out there, and that we're speaking as one unit. So I would ask that the board refrain from giving any individual statements to media in regards to any decisions that come out of this meeting or the future budget meeting this year. That's all I have. Any other discussion? Okay. Our next meeting will be our Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, June third, at six PM. The board will be meeting in executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss personnel. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.